Call meeting to order, Pledge of Allegiance, Councilmember Johnson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Larky.
Here.
Councilmember White. Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Pryon.
Here.
Councilmember Davidson.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember McCallum.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum. Personal appearances none, E unfinished business. Motion to approve the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash zero six.
An ordinance approving the twenty-fourth amendment to the Old Town Belton redevelopment plan to approve the five zero one Pine Street project as redevelopment project twenty twenty-five dash zero one and to authorize tax abatement as described therein.
Present.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Go ahead.
I, I'm familiar with this property and I, there's a, there's a couple of things that I'd, I'd like to have clarity on, Mike, if you don't mind. When we have, and, and I think this is probably a, a general question, when we have code issues with property that could come up for the three fifty-three, do we address those as well, why the three fifty-three is being addressed, or?
We typically have treated those as two separate processes, so the, the three fifty, in some cases, the three fifty-three and the project that, you know, a homeowner or a business owner is going to undertake could in many cases address those code issues. Knowing kind of what you're referencing in some of the abatement, or because of the abatement project, there are a couple of code violations that are going through their process, but because it is separate from the project, we're treating them as two different projects and the abatement is, the, sorry, the code abatement continues to move forward and we have some compliance and we're continuing to move forward with additional compliance. The abatement itself on the project, we consider a separate item and since we didn't make a requirement of anything outside of just the exterior of the home itself, part of the project, we're, we're having kind of a tough time justifying holding up one project as we move forward with the other, if that makes...
It does, but do we want to think about that in the future, that, you know, we see some ramifications here that, that could be something that we need to look at separately or in conjunction with, or?
Well, just a note for the city council and for all of these, the form MOU that a developer or property owner signs to actually formally receive their abatement does require them to comply with all city codes regarding the property for the length of the abatement and failure to do so could make it so that the abatement is terminated. So, that is, that, that is in the MOU.
So, that could be an incentive, then, correct?
Well, it's not, it's not just an incentive, it is a requirement to receive the incentive, your property cannot have code violations.
Okay, so we're still comfortable going forward to approve it, knowing that, that, that we may have to follow through with some other points?
Well, and it's also from staff's perspective, ultimately for that MOU to be signed and to be valid at the time of signing, the codes would have to be complied with.
All the codes would have to be?
To receive the abatement.
So, along, along with the MOU, staff still has to go through the cost certification process and the approval of the certificates of abatement that gets sent to the county. We still have several more steps after the council makes the approval of the abatement before we actually issue the abatement, a valid abatement, to the property owner. And so, at the end of the day, there's still some work, absolutely agree, there's still some work that needs to be done. Um, and again, we're kind of treating them as two different processes right now. The abatements have, the code abatements have to happen, but the property abatement on the project can move forward and essentially pause if they don't get the code abatements dealt with.
Well, and I guess I'd like the idea of if, if they don't stay in compliance, then there's some, there's some, something there, too.
Okay, all right, that's what I needed to know, thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Have we had an, even one example, I'm just, have we had an issue once in the past or any time in the past of having to take away abatement because of, you know, reckless code abandonment?
Aware of any that we've actually gone to that point.
Okay.
Anybody else? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Pryon.
Aye.
Davidson.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Johnson.
Aye.
McCallum.
Aye.
Lawson.
Aye.
Mayor Larky.
Yes.
Richardson.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, F, new business, we have none. G, consent agenda, one motion, non-available to approve recommendations noted, any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action. Present.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Two moved. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor except for two?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two, motion approving resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero six.
A resolution appointing Nicholas Anderson to serve on the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You're up.
Um, I'm very excited that Nick has, has decided to apply for this, this, uh, this committee. He was instrumental in us dealing with several things in traditions. He was level-headed, he was easy to work with, um, he has skills and trades in all sorts of building things that were very beneficial to us. I think he's a wonderful addition to this committee in whatever form it takes and I would like to thank him for applying and thank you for your, what you're gonna do.
Anybody else?
I take it that means you're in favor?
I am in favor.
Are you slowing it up, then?
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. H, communication from city council, councilmember Johnson.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Councilmember McCallum.
One second.
Oh, sorry. Come on, man.
I don't, uh, have anything other than if you have the ability to get your vehicle off of the street, please do so, as it'll make it easier for Public Works tonight as we get our, anywhere from one inches to twenty inches of snow that I keep seeing reported. Um, and, uh, I do have a parks update. Um, so, I know I've been saying this, but it'll be the last time this time. February park board meeting, um, will take place on February eighteenth, um, due to the Monday holiday. We do have some events coming up, um, the family dance called Candyland, uh, is coming up on February twenty-second. The cardboard boat race will be March first and then we have a dinner theater, Murder at the Station will take place on March eighth. If you have any questions about any of that, um, of course, you can always call High Blue front desk or, uh, visit the website and that is everything I have.
Councilmember Richardson.
What I can say is Main Street had the Galentine's event up here, um, Friday night?
Saturday.
Saturday. And the, the street was packed, a lot of people, looks like everybody was happy. That's all I was gonna say, it was a great event.
Um, I'll share with the whole council, some of you have talked to about this, but the Belton High School academies, um, has had some students and teachers interested in starting a Belton Youth Commission. It's loosely modeled on what Kansas City, Missouri has done, uh, with their youth commission and so, uh, Mike Ikki and I got to meet with Joni Harrell, Chase Nugent and Senior Lila Gardner on Friday to talk about that and we're excited to invite the students to the Council one-on-one courses that Mike will be leading, uh, Monday, the twenty-fourth and Monday, the following Monday, thank you.
The third.
The third, and, um, hopefully some of these students will make it to a council meeting in March as well. I'm really excited to hear from these students, get them engaged, a lot of them are interested in how, you know, our city functions, they're interested in getting involved at maybe this level someday, so hopefully we can all encourage them and, and make ourselves available to them, maybe as mentors or resources. We've also kicked around the idea of matching up council members with students who are interested in this, so, um, just a really exciting prospect, uh, for all of us. And lastly, I'll just give a preemptive thank you to first responders, police fire and Public Works for whatever snow we get. I, right now, it says one to three overnight, every time I hear it, it increases, you know, so hopefully it's fine, but thank you guys, uh, and gals for the long nights that might be ahead.
Everyone mark your calendars, March fifteenth at five, the St. Patty's Day Parade will be taking place. Contact myself or Darren Jones for more info.
Saturday night was very busy, as Chris said, um, lots of people, lots of shopping was being done, um, it's gonna be cold the next couple of nights, so, again, they are looking for more volunteers at the warming sta, um, center at Heart and Hand, so, that's it. I have nothing.
Wait, quick question, you said five PM is the St. Patrick's Day Parade?
Yes.
That's different, right?
No.
Oh, okay. Why do I always feel like our parades are in the morning? All right, ignore me.
Hey, I got one, I, I forgot one thing, the February thirteenth, they're having the Bel, Belton Veterans, uh, Resource Fair, if anybody knows of anybody, veterans that wanna go up there, it's a good thing. I know they had a person last year that was homeless that got hundred percent disability and they got him a house and everything, just one of our homeless guys, so, very cool thing.
Where?
Uh, Memorial Station.
Memorial Station.
Yeah, starts at four to seven o'clock. Four PM to seven PM.
Has, has, this may not be, you know, may not, have we passed out those flyers at Free Hot Soup?
I do not know about that. I know I've, I've shared it out there a couple of times, um, on my Facebook page, but it's, it's... Yeah, that's a good idea. Okay.
Did you have something else? I don't have anything, so, city manager.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the only thing I have is just an update on, on what councilmember Lawson had mentioned about the, uh, city coun, city council candidate one-on-ones that are coming up, they are on the February twenty-fourth and March third at six PM and we're inviting all of the, uh, candidates who are running to attend, so, and each day will be separate, will be different, so, uh, those wanting to attend or interested should try to plan for both, 'cause there'll be different information shared each day. That's all I've got.
All right, items for review and discussion, item one, FY twenty twenty-six utility rates.
Maybe. Does work.
All right. Mr. Mayor and council, um, this is a workshop, which is nothing really new that we're presenting tonight, but we wanna formalize this and go through the, the process, you know, setting utility rates is done via ordinance. Uh, obviously, as part of the budgeting process, we talked about trash rates already, we've already gone forward with that, um, and we've had some internal discussions about, uh, what we're doing with water and wastewater rates in terms of trying to lower fees and I know we just talked at the, uh, last meeting, I believe, about the, how we would go about lowering the fees, um, for debt service. And so, this is current, uh, FY twenty-five sewer water and trash rates, um, water for residential inside city limits right now, and this is for the lowest level, so this is essentially what your lowest bill could be, sixteen fourteen, sewer fourteen eighty, trash eighteen seventy-nine and debt service is eleven sixty-six and that debt service is both water debt service and wastewater debt service combined, okay? Now, on the bill, it shows up as two separate things, but that's what, that's the combine, combined amount. So, the total, total minimum bill before taxes would be sixty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents, commercial at sixty-two seventy-five, residential outside city limits fifty-three sixty-one, they don't have trash, um, and commercial, non-residential outside city limits is seventy-two dollars and eight cents, again, they don't have trash, so, those are the, the current rates as they sit, all right? So, our proposed FY twenty-six water sewer trash rates, we've talked about the trash already, uh, twenty-one twenty-seven, which would be an increase, um, catching the trash bill up, um, once we added the recycling, we said we'd eat that for a little bit and then, of course, they asked for that, that four percent that we gave them recently. This would essentially be, mean that the rate payers would be paying exactly what we're paying per resident, um, for trash service. Uh, water sewer unchanged, um, and then the combined debt service, we would lower to five eighty, which would be essentially two dollars and ninety cents, water, two dollars and ninety cents wastewater, but we'd combine them on the bill to say just one debt service and there'd be a portioned equally fifty-fifty to each of those two funds. Commercial, non-residential, we didn't feel like lowering them completely down would be justified, um, they're, they have a much higher debt service payment, um, taking them down to twenty-four dollars would be considerable savings, um, and then you see, obviously, the residential outside city limits and, and, uh, for, and non-residential follow suit. Here's the change, here's the net that we're looking at, um, if we go through with those rate changes, um, the current FY twenty-five minimum bill was sixty-one thirty-nine, which if you go back to over here, that matches that number. And then, the proposed FY twenty-six total minimum bill for residential would be fifty-eight oh-one, which matches this number, and so, you've got a net, a net savings of three dollars and thirty-eight cents per residential household. Um, for the residential, commercial would save a little bit more, six dollars and thirteen cents total, because they're paying a larger, um, uh, debt service payment right now, and so, and then, uh, outside of, outside city limits would also come down, uh, five, five eighty-six and six thirteen, again, just because the debt service is the same evenly applied across through all the bills, we don't differentiate inside and outside city limits for the debt service fee. So, that's, uh, the budget factors implications, anticipate five percent increase from Little Blue Sewer, uh, healthy fund balance that allows us to reduce these rates, balanced operational budget, less any capital expenditures, what that means is in wastewater and water both, um, we've got balanced operational budgets, they're both operating in the red for FY twenty-six, if we move forward with the current budget, but that includes some specific capital improvements that would allow that to happen, the operations side would essentially be in the, uh, would be, uh, in the black. And so, and of course, trash, we've talked about the four point two percent increase from GFL already, that's already been approved by council, and so, and just a, just FYI, we talked about it, we anticipate moving forward that every year, um, it's the FY twenty-seven, we anticipate another increase from GFL based on whatever the CPI is, as they are able to do with the contract, but, um, so that's the basic discussion, is I'm, we're ready for questions, we've, Casey's got, she's feeling well under the weather, that's why I'm giving this presentation, but she's got, you know, if we need information, we can get you information, um, this would come forth in an ordinance if, if you guys so choose.
Go ahead.
Um, the side with budget implications, um, were those taken into consideration as assumptions for the fifty-eight oh-one?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, we, um, we will still be operationally in the black in water and sewer and being able, be able to pay our current debt service adequately with, you know, with no issues, um, even with the decrease in rates that we're talking about with, or the decrease in the debt service payments that we're talking about.
Okay, so the anticipated five percent increases in wastewater and water are taken into the proposed fifty-eight oh-one? Perfect, thank you.
It is.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we're not raising our rates at all, we're not passing along, any, any increase in Little, Little Blue or any increase from Kansas City, um, we would, we would essentially absorb and, and, and for this year, um, utilizing fund balance to cover.
Okay, talking about outside city limits water, that's gotta be a very small group.
A very small group.
Um, how does, I'm just trying to figure out how that even happens, 'cause obviously we gotta get the infrastructure to get there, to get them the water.
How many, do we, are we talking, Casey, it's less than a hundred, I believe, it's probably like...
Ain't there some on Kentucky?
Yeah, there's some that are, uh, across the street on Kentucky that we're giving water to, uh, but... Uh, no, those are the ones that actually rain was providing water the other direction.
Right in the other way, all right.
Uh, it has to be on the south side of town.
Yeah. And is it the kind of thing where we were already had a water, I know that wasn't the purpose of this discussion per se, but I, I guess thoughts there and this is a utility, so maybe probably not where we want to do this, but, um, you know, annexation comes to mind when we have populations like that, I guess, is my point. Just wondering if they have, if they don't wanna be involved, if they do, I, I don't know, just, I just thought it was a little unique.
Annexation discussions, I mean, we're definitely, uh, ready to move forward on any of those discussions as we move.
Okay.
And I think that's a fair, fair point to make, we're already providing water service, it seems like.
Go ahead, go, go ahead, Casey.
Do you ask about commercial outside?
Residential.
Residential outside?
Technically, it's commercial slash non-residential outside, as residential outside, I guess, I'm just curious in the, anything outside?
Yeah, so the, we've got eighty-five sewer only that are outside city limits and then, uh, residential and then we've got twelve commercial that are water only.
Okay, so it's, as suspected, a pretty small number. Okay.
Correct, and many of the sewer only is 'cause our sewer main goes down through many people's backyards as it goes down to the plant, everybody we cut through their yard got an opportunity to connect to the sewer.
That seems fair.
Go ahead, Chris.
Um, I, I had a guy, um, ask me a question on the water bill, beans that we're doing a lot of it's being paid online, um, if your due date is, say, the third, is it due by five o'clock or with online stuff now, can we make it before midnight, eleven fifty-nine?
So, it is due by five, our system actually, um, processes a shut-off fee at five. Um, I mean, that is something we can look into, but right now, that's what our current software system does.
Okay, I just figured most, most people are paying online or a lot of people are probably paying online right now, so...
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a, I would second that, that, that would potentially be very confusing to me personally and I think I'm not alone in that, if I see the date, I just assume midnight, because that's how most online things work, but I understand this is not how, you know, I understand there's different parameters here, but I, I could get behind changing that.
Yeah, and there's a shut-off process that they go through on, on Wednesdays, so they have to know exactly who hasn't paid by five on that particular Wednesday, which, if you guys remember, we're actually trying to change those dates here pretty soon, um, but the girls do stay a little bit late on Wednesdays to get the shut-off list ready for the guys the following morning, they don't, we really don't want the guys starting any later than they already do on Thursday mornings for the shut-off process, so that's really the biggest reason that we, um, make five the, the time for the shut-off.
When we, when we're, we're to change the dates on the bills, do we have a timeframe on that yet, when we're trying to get all that to happen?
I would say within the next six months, we really wanna try to get there.
Okay, so it'll be this calendar year?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
All right.
Anybody else?
Does this seem reasonable, are we comfortable where we are now?
I think so.
I mean...
Anytime it goes down, it's a good thing.
I, I would just, the only thing, we talked about this and it just, it wasn't brought up and I just wanna repeat it, we'd need to advertise this, put it in the bill somehow, it needs to, put it in a line item, I don't, it needs to be advertised, that, this needs to be advertised, that's all I'm saying. Correct.
Go ahead.
Yeah, everybody likes that the utility bill would go down, I just wanted to revisit what you said, that operationally, we're in the black, so that the increases this year will be absorbed by the fund balance versus passing along our costs to the residents, which is probably best practices, correct, that we just, across the board, say it costs us this much to get you water, this much to process your sewer, we want residents to cover that, we don't wanna have a fund balance?
Generally, yes.
So, can you kinda talk me through what next year might look like? You know what I mean, like, how would you project this year's rates affecting next year and so forth?
Well, a lot of that depends on growth and, and, you know, sometimes, you know, we've had, uh, this year, our growth was, was enough that it kind of counterbalanced any potential thoughts we had of eating into fund balance and so, we actually were flush for the year operationally, even by absorbing the increase. So, if our growth rate continues at the current rate that we've been do, been, been growing, then I anticipate that we would be able to absorb the five percent increase and not have a, a major issue. Like, it wouldn't, it wouldn't eat away at our fund balance to the point where we, now we're, now, you know, you see what I'm saying, we have the fund balance there in case we need it, that's what we're planning on, in case the growth's not there, but if the growth is there, then, then we can eventually even do more.
I guess I'm just thinking ahead, like, is there an acceptable amount of absorbing increases before we go? This is an uncomfortable amount, Casey, you're kinda looking at me like you understand my attempts at math words. Right, um, and actually, some of this isn't fund balance, it's, it's a, it's a balanced budget, less the capital, um, I mean, where we're eating into the fund balance is the capital purchases, it's not the, um, eating, you know, it's not us eating the cost of the increase, so it's, it is just the capital purchases where we're eating into the fund balance and it's not even all the capital purchases, like Joe said, we, um, we are in the black, not just balanced, but in the black operationally and then we've got, which we won't get into tonight, um, he'll present the, the budget next council and, uh, there's some big projects on there, um, and you'll see what we're talking about when we, uh, say eating into the fund balance.
You know, you know, long-term, if, if the fund balances were at a normal amount, what we would wanna do is make sure we're in the black overall, not just operationally, but capital as well, right? And so, the, the fund balance would be there as an, in case some things go wrong, we've got the money to cover it, not as a, as a, you know, for capital expenditures, unless we plan for something, unless we hold off and say, well, let's bank it up for a couple of years and do this big project that we're planning on, that's, that's generally how we want that to work, so, um, but yeah, I mean, since we have the decent fund balance, we, we wanna go ahead and move forward with some projects, um, we've promised the, the taxpayers, you know, sixty million dollars worth of water projects and some of that's, you know, the, the discussion about going into debt to do some of that is coming for us all to have here, uh, in March, and so, um, we can start getting a jumpstart on some of that, that's, to me, that's what we're do, what we're supposed to be doing.
And just double checking my recollection, um, we are required to carry a fund balance of at least fifteen percent, correct?
That is a general fund.
General fund.
Requirement.
Gotcha.
And, and these, these are, you know, water and wastewater are utilities, so, uh, and I'm using this term loosely, it's, you can call it an enterprise fund, I know we use the term enterprise fund kind of a little differently in, in our accounting, but it's kind of an enterprise fund in meaning that it can sustain itself through fees. And so, and as a, a water and wastewater utility, you have the ability to pass on any increase in cost to the consumer through the fees and this, and to provide the service. And so, because of that, you need a, you, you don't have to have as high a fund balance legally, I mean, there's not, there's not, as long as you don't, you know, and you're operating a utility, you know, you just gotta make sure you're paying your bills.
Um, do we know what, I mean, maybe I'm getting too in the weeds and this'll come up in budget talks, but... What the fund balance is? Uh-huh. Yes. Okay. So, right now, the way that I've got the budget set up, um, and I don't plan on changing anything in the next week, um, at the end of FY twenty-six, I'm estimating a ninety-six percent wastewater and a sixty-five percent water.
Very strong numbers.
Yes.
I wasn't very comfortable with it.
No, I wasn't.
Yes, about fifteen percent, those numbers are much higher than that, yeah, even.
Yeah, so, yeah, I wanted to make sure that I was understanding of that, that was, that was, those are very high numbers, right?
Yes, they, yes, they are.
Very healthy numbers, yes.
Yes, they, both funds have healthy fund balances.
So, we could...
Ten million, they got ninety-six percent, what would that number be?
Nine million, six hundred thousand. Before...
Above and beyond what we need to pay our bills.
Expenses.
So, they're very...
So...
So, basically, we could not take in any revenue for a year and, which we would never want to plan for that, um...
Yeah, and so that...
Is this normal? Is there like a best practices fund balance for an enterprise fund? I think it is a, it's a, it's a healthy fund balance. Um, I don't know that, I know that we don't have anything written in code saying that this is what we must have for water and wastewater, and like Joe said, it is an enterprise fund, it's a business activity. Um, these two funds, there's a lot of capital that, that comes out of these, a lot of projects that we need to do. Um, I'm comfortable with this, I'm very comfortable with, uh, where we are right now. Um, and again, we haven't passed on rates in twenty-four, twenty-five, and now this will be the third year, I believe, that we haven't passed on increases, so.
We can do it because of those healthy fund balances.
Well, that feels like right sizing then, right? Yes. If we get increases and we absorb them with fund balances that healthy, that makes sense to me. After the increases that were passed on prior to me getting here, I don't know, I can't remember exactly what years those were, but.
Yeah. So.
Okay.
With that, so then, let me ask the opposite question, which is, how much could we potentially absorb then, say, this fiscal year, um, to potentially bring down a bill based on a fund balance like that? And I know what you're thinking, you're thinking those are set aside for capital projects and whatnot, and I, I get that, um, but I, I just wanna play devil's advocate here for a minute, you know, what, what could we, you think we could potentially look at?
So, if, if we potentially, well, I would say we wouldn't potentially look at doing that, because, um, I mean, we will continue to get increases from Kansas City, and just like trash, we did eat it a couple of years, but you can't continue to do that. Um, so I, I, I wouldn't potentially look at that for this year.
We've probably got, what, about, um, would it be, say, about five hundred thousand in, in?
Trash.
In, uh, what do you call it, uh, capital improvement, like on, on the water side?
Like, how much do you have budgeted for?
Yeah, I mean, that, that, that we could potentially go down and, and.
Oh, yeah.
Not harm our.
It would be about, yeah.
Operational.
About five hundred is what we were in the black, less the capital.
Making sure that we're still operating in the black.
Okay.